Good evening, everyone. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, May 12, 2020. On March 16, 2020, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Accordingly, due to health and safety concerns as well as the stay-at-home order issued by the county judge of Paris County, this meeting is being conducted by video conference. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Kelly Hodges, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Donald Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I will ask everyone to mute their microphones unless speaking. Thank you. Our next item is a superintendent's remark. So at this time, I would like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President New. So last Tuesday, excuse me, last Thursday night, we presented a lot of information regarding providing updates to you with what's going on in the district. Specifically, we talked with you and presented to you information regarding the over 10,000 Chromebooks that we've given out, over 405 meals served to our families in our community. We also provided information regarding the number of parents that have been assisted by our district's help desk, as well as the over 41,000 paper packets and some 193,000 assignments that's been uploaded into our learning management. And so our goal last week was to provide you all the detailed update on kids that we've reached and been able to continue providing learning with, as well as information for students that we're continuing to look for. In addition to that, we shared with you all a lot of detail regarding our plans. And so tonight, we're going to go over some more detail and one more presentation regarding graduation. You know, the governor's changed his order and he's allowing for outside graduation ceremonies only. And so Mark Miranda, Chief of Operations, will be talking with you all specifically about our plan to provide an outside graduation to our students. If you remember, last month, we presented to you our survey results regarding the virtual graduation and the online graduation in our survey results. Their students still wanted an outside graduation, and so we'll be sharing that information. Other than that, we're extremely happy with the progress that we're making. As you know, that we're continuing to plan for the summer. And so hopefully, in our next board meeting, we'll be able to provide you all the detailed presentation on our summer school program, our summer learning opportunities for our students, as well as we'll be talking with you, getting additional feedback regarding our plans for the fall. This does conclude my brief announcements for this evening, and we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Next, I would like to ask any of the trustees, would you like to make remarks tonight?
President Newhouse, I would like to make a comment to the other trustees and to the public. Each year, we select our legislative priorities as a board, and we did not foresee the pandemic at the time we set up those priorities. What we found is that the headings such as "school safety" and "school finance," "assessment accountability," that the overarching priorities are still going to serve us well. However, we need to make some additions and updates to take into account how we need to adjust for the pandemic to make sure that our staff and our students are safe, and also our viability as a school system, and make sure that we are still continuing our mission in very different circumstances. So I will be sharing some of this in the coming month and wanting feedback from trustees. We need to hand this in to TASB by June 15. Any changes we suggest, and we would like to share with other school districts that they may want to use our updates as well. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. I'd like to share with our board members that our counselors are doing an outstanding job working with our students under these circumstances. I praised our teachers last week and thanked actually all of our employees for what they have done for us during this pandemic time. But I have to say, the counselors are still working very hard with our students. I had a Spring Foundation meeting in which we received over 200 applications for scholarships, and this was a result of our counselors working with students during this time, getting their applications in. We also have students who have received scholarships from other associations, such as the Mexican-American School Board Association. We have winners from our district. We had students that won Channel 2 scholarship of $25,000 on TV last week. So I'd like to say again a thank you for our counselors for working with them. I also had an opportunity to see a video that one counselor did of all of her students that were going to college, and it said exactly where they were going to college and what they were going to major in. And I know, as a parent, I would have been just excited, so excited, to see my child's picture and their school and their major on screen rolling. So I know that will probably be the start of our virtual graduation, but hats off to our counselors. They are really keeping our students engaged.
Madam President, I wanted to make a comment. As a new trustee, can you hear me? I really applaud the efforts of the communication team, getting the information out to us and just keeping us abreast of what's going on. And for me, being new, I'm still, it's interesting, because when I'm out in the community, whether I'm at Walmart or at Aldi, people from the community do stop me because they recognize me as a board member. And so I am, because of the information I've received when questions are asked, I'm able to provide a, you know, honest and informative response. I really appreciate you all for conveying the information and providing the information to us in a timely manner so that we can digest it and be able to respond when we're asked questions. So, thank you. Good job.
Great, great. Thank you. If no one else, I'll move to our next item. Yes, yes. Please.
This is Trustee Gonzalez. I just want to echo everything you all have already said. I think the district is doing a phenomenal job on keeping communications, and it just feels like we have not missed a beat with anything. We are continuing instruction. Communications is going. We're feeding our students. So hats off to everyone in the district. You guys are doing a fantastic job. And as I said last month, still trying to take care of your own families at the same time. So everyone in Spring ISD, as Dr. Watson always says, we win as a team, and I echo everything you guys are doing. Great job, Spring ISD, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you. Our next item is a presentation on the class of 2020 graduation plans. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Chief Operations Officer, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Newhouse, members of the board. I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully, you'll be able to see that. Can you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Do I get a thumbs up? Yes, okay, great, 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 great. Okay, so I'm going to go over the graduation ceremonies. We actually have two. The virtual, we'll spend most of our time talking about the in-person graduation at the stadium. So just as a reminder, we received guidance from TEA in accordance with Executive Order GA 21. TEA has allowed school districts to have in-person ceremonies. And so for districts like ours, we're allowed to have in-person ceremonies on or after June 1. Of course, between now and then, things could change, and so they have given us that disclaimer at the bottom there. The really neat thing is, we have a facility that can handle an outdoor graduation, and so we're really proud to be able to have Planet Ford Stadium to be able to do this in. But before we get to the outdoor graduation, I wanted to let you know and remind you, as President Newhouse has mentioned, we have the virtual graduation that's scheduled for Saturday, June 6, and that's going to be essentially all day. It'll be rolling graduations with Decane, starting with Decane, then Spring Early College, Westfield, Spring High School, and then Carl Wunsch. That's the schedule for June 6. I'll show you in a minute kind of the difference between the two. And then we have the outdoor graduation schedule. This has been announced. It's on our website. The location, of course, is Planet Ford Stadium, so we're real excited about being able to do that. So Friday night, June 12, will be Spring High School, followed Saturday morning by Carl Wunsch High School. Saturday evening will be Decane, and then Sunday morning, Spring Early College, and Sunday evening, Westfield. We wanted to be able to have them within about two or three days, therefore, we can have some rain delay days, which would be a Monday and Tuesday following those graduation dates if we have to go into a rain situation. If we would have stretched it out further, we think that we would have run into some rain problems potentially. So here's our graduation comparison, just to give you an idea of the difference between the virtual graduation and the in-person. We realize that not everybody is going to want to join the in-person graduation for various reasons. And so we were already working on the virtual graduation before the TEA gave us guidance on an in-person graduation. And so the decision was made to kind of keep them both, but they are unique. So the virtual graduation will still have the anthem, the pledges, we'll have a principal's welcome, board president's remarks. There will be a dignitary address. I believe a congresswoman will be there to be able to give us an address as well. And then we'll have the salutatorian and valedictorian addresses, which will be on the video, and a superintendent's address, followed by a slide deck roll call of the graduates. And so you will be able to see the graduates on screen during the virtual graduation that will roll through. We think that for the students that are going to be at home and the parents that are going to be at home, that's going to be a really exciting time for them to be able to see that online during their graduation, their virtual graduation ceremony. For the live graduation, a little bit different, in person, we'll have the anthem, the pledges, the principal's welcome, the board president's remarks, the superintendent's address, and then we'll have the live diploma presentation, which we'll go into a little more details on here in just a second. And then the salutatorian and valedictorian will be on the virtual. For the live graduation, we'll have the class of 2020 president will be live. Usually, when we're at the graduations, the president kind of wraps things up with the graduation, and it gets really exciting. The students all know the president and really have a great time with the class president being able to speak. And then we'll have a school song, which is another traditional thing that we like to do at the end of our graduations. The program for the outdoor graduation will be a little bit shorter than normal graduations that we would see at the Berry Center, because we're going to be outdoors, because we're going to be socially distanced. We feel like having it condensed a little bit would be more prudent. To let you know what the field is going to look like during virtual graduation, we're blessed to be able to have a stage that we already have, that we're going to be setting up for the, I believe it's the North End Zone. This will be right under the video board. That way, when you're looking towards the stage, you'll be able to see the giant video board behind you, which will have all of the video of the participants, and there'll be a field camera. We'll talk about that in a second. The stage will be ADA accessible for those students that need to have that, and we will be spaced socially distance apart on the stage. There is details about who's going to be on the stage that we will still work out. It could be rotating individuals, or we could potentially sit more people than that. But we will be socially distanced at least six feet apart on the stage, and I'll show you a little more here about the social distance and health guidelines here in just a second. Also, from this, you see the little white checker marks that are on the field. Those represent the chairs that our students are going to be sitting on. Those will be spaced also six feet apart in every direction. Our largest graduating class is Spring High School, and we are anticipating at least about 726 students that are eligible to walk and to graduate from that. And we have done the math kind of on the football field, and we do know that the seats will be able to fit. It may not look working out very well in the planning stages for this to all be able to work out. So this is what the graduation setting is going to look like. Let's talk a little bit more about the social distance and health guidelines, because I know that's really kind of important. So number one, TEA has given us guidance that there can be no rehearsals. They have told us that there can only be one event, not multiple events. Normally, a campus will have almost a half-day rehearsal, if even longer. There will be no rehearsals, and so we're going to have to do a lot of good communication upfront for the students and the graduates so that they can be prepared for their evening or their morning. The other part of TEA guidance is that we need to limit the number of school employees to the number needed to support the ceremony. Now, for me, as I'm talking to people, that doesn't mean a small number, because we definitely need a number of employees to be able to support managing the students and kind of helping out at the ceremony. What it means is there won't be extra on top of that employees that are working that. We also know that we're going to be socially distancing in the stands as well, so we will not be able to have unlimited tickets. We're going to have to limit the number of tickets for guests, and that'll be subject to the number of graduates for each school. Our stadium seats, about 8,000, and we're only going to be able to get about 1,500 seats when we do the social distancing of six feet apart. So there will be a limited number of tickets for each student to be able to have. We're also asking all employees, students, and visitors to wear face coverings over their nose and mouth, and so that's going to be one of the things that we're asking everybody to be able to do and to comply to as they come into the stadium to do that, to stay, again, to stay safe. Prior to the start of the graduation ceremony, TEA has given us guidance on screening for health prior to entering the stadium. And so prior to entering the ceremony, students and guests will be screened for signs of symptoms of COVID-19. Those found with any of the signs or the symptoms will be excluded from the event. And there is a list that the TEA guidance has given us. We're working through the details and the logistics, and we have meetings scheduled later this week to go through all the details and happening. We're anticipating that happening probably near the curbside before they even get to the ticket booth, and so we're making plans right now for that screening to be able to take place. The other thing that we're going to do is we'll have hand sanitizers available at all of the venue entrances. These will be pedestal sanitizers that we'll be able to set up near the entrances, and so that will be available for everybody that also enters the venue at the time. Again, with the social distancing, we mentioned this before, excluding numbers of the same household. If you're already living together, that doesn't necessarily apply, but all graduates and guests will be kept six feet or more spacing between them. Between the stadium seats will also be marked for social distancing, so we'll be actively marking off stadium seats where not to sit, and we will have attendants throughout the stadium to be able to help and assist with our guests to be able to get properly seated once they come into the building. One of the things that's going to help us, we were thinking really hard and long about the safety. One of the things that you'll remember from all of our previous graduations is that processional, and all the students march in, and they're kind of back-to-back-to-back. They also have to stage themselves behind the stage, you know, when we were at the Berry Center. There's not a really good place for the students to stage at the stadium. They would have to do so in the parking lot, which could be hot, depending on the time of day it is, and will be difficult to keep them socially distanced. So we made the decision not to have a processional for safety reasons. Graduates will be seated prior to the beginning of the graduation ceremony, and we anticipate that we can still do pomp and circumstance. The graduates would just stand for a round of pomp and circumstance, potentially at the beginning of the program, to be able to get that graduation feel without having to march back-to-back-to-back into the stadium. It will also reduce the amount of time, because the socially-distanced processional could take quite a while to get through. The other thing that we'll have is we will have probably the football stadium announcer to be able to give public announcements during the ceremony. We'll utilize this during the event to communicate social distancing requirements, to provide logistical information before, during, and after graduation. So those things will be happening with the public service announcements that'll be going on. For those of you that may be on stage, diplomas will not be handed from person to person. That's part of TEA's guidance as well. We anticipate being able to have a smaller table that will place the diploma on for the student to pick the diploma up off of the table. And we have talked about things like wiping down the diplomas with sanitizer before we put that there, as long as it doesn't diminish the finish on the diploma, so we'll check that out as well. And so there will be no hand-to-hand handing of diplomas. And then the stadium will be sanitized throughout and thoroughly cleaned after each graduation. We anticipate by that time to have the electrostatic misters in place, and we'll be able to use those for every one of those seats that you saw on the field. They'll get thoroughly sanitized after the graduation. We'll have an army of custodians coming in. There's a couple of other things that didn't make it into the slide deck, but I wanted you to know. So number one, the in-person graduation will be live online. It will be streamed live online. So we'll have cameras on the field, and we'll be able to use the stadium cameras to be able to livestream the entire ceremony for those family members and those individuals that aren't going to be able to make it, because we are going to have such a smaller group of people to be able to be our guests. We'll have on-field cameras. We even have a pan tilt zoom camera that's used during the football games for close-up shots of the players. We'll be able to get close-up shots of the graduates as well while they're on the field. So we're really excited about the possibilities with the livestreaming that we're going to be able to do there. One other safety aspect that we talked about more recently is because these will be outdoors, the athletics department have a couple of on-field cooling stations that we'll be able to set up. And so we're actually going to set three cooling stations up on the field, two probably in the back, and one near the stage itself for anybody that may need to have that. First aid stations will also be set up on the concourses, which is where they already are inside the building. And so we're excited about the possibility of doing our graduation in person. We know it's going to look a little bit different, but we are excited about being able to do this, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you guys may have.
Mark, given the number of graduates, have we thought about the timeframe of the graduation ceremony will actually take place, or did TEA give us any regulations around that?
We didn't get timeframe guidance from TEA, but we have taken steps to shorten the program, both for the social distancing and the time it takes, but also because we're going to be outdoors, and from weather standpoint, we're not 100% sure what the weather will be like, obviously. And so we have taken steps to limit the program. Each campus has a different-sized graduating class, so it will vary. Spring High School has the largest class, so we can anticipate that their diploma distribution is going to take a little bit longer. But we are actively trying to minimize, which is why the salutatorium and valedictorian will be on the video for the virtual graduation as opposed to in the live graduation. That cuts probably about 45 minutes potentially from the program in and of itself.
Thank you. Good presentation, very informative. You all have thought of everything.
Thank you. Hi, Justine.
I have a question, chief, while Justine figures out her technical issues. Since we're not going to be able to do a rehearsal for students, do we have any other sort of training aid or something that we can do so that it's not the first time everybody's seeing this on the day, maybe a short video or something?
Yeah, those are some possibilities. We have a meeting this Thursday morning with the school leadership to be able to go over logistics. This has been pretty fast. I mean, we thought maybe that we would be able to have a live graduation at the end of July, but we think moving it up to the middle of June is a little bit better for all of the students that are going to be involved in this. And so there is some logistical planning that we have to do, and to be able to get the students knowing their role. It's already been expressed by the principals that that's going to be a bit of a challenge, but it's something that TEA has given us that guidance on, and so you're absolutely right. We're going to do all we can to communicate and potentially, you know, that's a good suggestion of maybe potentially having the video or some sort of representative of what it's going to be like. Students will be shown their seats and given probably a seat number, just like you would go into a theater or a football game, and they would go find their seats and then be directed on how to line up and to go get their diplomas. It could be a challenge, but we're aware and plan to do our best to be able to give that information to the students. It's a good observation.
Hello?
Well, thank you for, again, echoing what Trustee Hodges said. Thank you for the very good presentation, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. I should put my question in the chat as well. I wanted to inquire about the individuals that will be conducting the screening upfront. Will they be healthcare workers?
Yeah, we're going to work with Jeanne Parker, our nurse, which you've seen. She came to our board meeting and gave us all the COVID. So we want to work with them as much as possible, and the stations that we're talking about, we'd like to have them manned by nurses. That decision hasn't been necessarily relayed to everybody yet, because we have our planning meetings this week, but that's what we've discussed so far.
Thank you.
Chief Miranda, will everybody on the stage be wearing masks as well?
Right now, that is probably what we're going to do, yes. That's the recommendation.
And will there be any shade on the stage?
There is a possibility. We're looking at the stage right now. So we're using a stage that was once in the old Roberson Middle School. It does have the ability to do some of that, but we're going to work on that with the video screen behind it. And so that is still in the planning stages, but I'll be able to let you know as soon as our maintenance and PVA team, which are helping on the stage part, know. We wanted to do the graduation in the evening, which is a little bit better sometimes if we get a little bit later in the evening, and then, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes. I just mentioned this because those graduation robes that the people on the stage are wearing are quite often very thick. I think they're made for medieval winters, and at least the students have a very light wear-in. I know this is really basic things, but those of us who were at the very center one time when the air conditioning went out and the lights were on, the people on the stage, I can tell you, we almost lost some people.
Okay.
They'll take us back.
Okay, we will definitely take that. Okay, we will definitely take that. We'll take that, definitely take that into consideration. Thank you.
Well, I think this is an excellent opportunity for our students. And I'm really excited that we're able to provide an opportunity for them to have an in-person graduation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just amazed that you can pull this off. I never thought we would be able to pull this off. So this is just amazing.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it.
All for our students. Thank you. Our team works very hard for our students. So thank you. Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize Chief Financial Officer and Westbrook's.
Thank you so much, President Newhouse, evening, members of the board. We have one item this evening, and it is a request for proposal for before and after-school childcare and enrichment services. So we issued the RFP and we had six responses that came in. And through this competitive process and reviewing the responses that came in, we were able to determine that all six organizations were qualified, experienced, and licensed to offer these services. And so this evening, we're seeking the board's approval to award all six of the daycare providers the opportunity to do business with the school district and allow our elementary schools to determine of those six vendors that are awarded, which one fits best with their campus needs and with their community needs. So again, we're seeking the board's approval to award the ability for all six of the recommended vendors to offer before and after childcare services.
Ms. Westbrook's question for you. I think if I remember looking at it last week, one of the vendors here is YMCA, one of our vendors?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. YMCA is one of the six vendors. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And at this time, I'd like to let everyone know that Trustee Kelly Hodges works with the YMCA. So in talking with Trustee Hodges, she will remove herself from voting on this particular item because of her employment with the YMCA that is a vendor. And I wanted to let everyone know that. Is that correct, Trustee Hodges?
Yes, that is correct. Yes. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me, Rhonda?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, I'm, I'm an executive director with the YMCA.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees award the contracts for before and after-school childcare and enrichment services to the providers recommended by the administration.
President Newhouse, I just, I did have a couple of questions before we proceed to the motion and voting.
Yes.
I'm just a little bit curious about what goes into the criteria for risk factor. I don't know if somebody who could help me with that.
Yes, sir. I'm pulling up the page. Based on memory alone, Mr. Adams, what I can imagine is the longevity of the company and its ability to provide services to the district within the needed qualities and the experience there. But I will keep looking and see if I can get you the exact detail on that particular item.
Okay. So I'm, one of the proposed vendors here has a risk factor score of six on a scale of one to 10. As I understand it, that makes me a little bit nervous. That's also a vendor who is not local or is based out of the state even. Because I just, I have some concerns about that. I wondered if anybody else on the team had any worries about that. And like, a lot of that is based around this notion of what a risk factor is, so.
And that's, that's my understanding, but I want to get you a clear and complete response. And so I will find that for you and get back to you in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, while she's looking for that, I'd like to go ahead and put the motion on the floor so that we can proceed with the discussion. So I move that the Board of Trustees award the contract for before and after-school childcare and enrichment services to the providers recommended by the administration.
Second.
Do we have a second? I'm sorry. Do we have a second? It has been moved by Justine Durant and second by Winford Adams that the Board of Trustees award the contracts for before and after-school childcare and enrichment services to the providers recommended by the administration. I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Winford Adams, Jr.?
So again, Madam President, I really didn't want to hold this vote until I had gotten that extra information. So I thought we were having discussion after the motion came out. If I'm the only one that has that concern.
That was my understanding as well.
That was what she said, yes. Mr. Adams, if you'd like, we can move this item down in the agenda.
That's fine.
Newhouse, and I'll have the complete response for you by the time we circle back around.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, we only have one other item, but we will move there. Okay. So our next item is the consent agenda. So I will entertain a motion and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. And for our guest, the consent agenda was reviewed at our work session last Thursday. Presentations were made. Questions and discussions were reviewed on the consent items, and we put all of them together here to vote at one time. So I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we accept the items printed on the consent agenda.
I accept the motion. It has been moved by Kelly Hodges, second by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will now poll the board.
Trustee.
I'm sorry.
That's right, Trustee Newhouse. I'd just like to reiterate that we had some excellent presentations from the administration. You know, conducting our meetings via Zoom has been a challenge, but you all have provided us with all the necessary information and materials well in advance. We had some very robust conversations on Thursday. The meeting ran pretty late Thursday to make sure that all of our questions were answered and so that I'm feeling very comfortable in proceeding with the consent agenda because I believe we covered everything so thoroughly on Thursday. So I just want to thank the administration for doing such a fine job on getting us everything we needed digitally so that we could continue to conduct our business. Well, thank you. The district's business, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durant. Thank you. I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges.
Aye.
Deborah Jensen.
Aye.
Justine Durant.
Aye.
Janet Gonzalez.
Aye.
Donald Davis.
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. So the motion carries unanimously. So at this time, I will reach back out to Ms. Westbrook's to see if she's had an opportunity to research that information for Mr. Adams.
Yes, ma'am. And so just going back to the original thought, just wanted to confirm really quickly that it was just based upon the perception of whether or not the company could meet the needs of the district in terms of the number, the size of their staffing, if they've had any financial stress over the last several years. And so that was, that was the criteria. And so the one company that was marked a little lower just had not exactly the same criteria as some of the others, a smaller staff, but still deemed to be qualified to provide the services. Just when compared to the others, they scored lower. But it's whether or not they have the ability to provide those services that were requested and how they rank compared to the responses that we received from the other vendors. And if there's any specific, like if you want to see the specific scorecards for each one and how each vendor was scored, then we can provide that information as well.
All right. So I feel like I'm, I apologize because I feel like I'm sort of springing this on you guys. And I should have looked at this more closely after the presentation on Thursday. I'm just a little nervous about particularly that vendor that I don't know enough about them. They're, they seem to be based in Portland, Oregon. I don't know how childcare providers are regulated in Oregon. I do know a little bit about how that's done in the state of Texas. And so that low score made me nervous. It's, I just, I worry about child safety, is it, all those sorts of things as it relates to our kids and any third-party partner that we partner with that comes into contact with our children. So that's, I just would like to see more information about these companies because we're handing our babies off to them. And so that's, that's a concern I have. If nobody else has a concern, I'm prepared to go ahead and vote, but maybe we table this if that doesn't create a problem for you all's timeline. And I'd like to see more information on the providers.
It does not cause a hardship with timeline. We could always circle back and bring it to you and at the June board meeting with it. I don't think the timing is an issue right now, especially with school closed and about to be complete for the year. So if we need to, we can bring all of the information back to make sure that you're comfortable and fully informed as you make that decision.
And this is Trustee Durant. I'd like to go on the record. I can't hear Mr. Durant.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Yeah, we can hear you now.
I was actually in the chat. I don't know what's going on. My sound's going in and out. But I just want to go on the record as a point of Trustee Adams' concerns. And so I would like to see some additional information and perhaps even propose to my colleagues that we consider removing that one vendor, if necessary, once the data is reviewed. So I do, I don't want him to feel out there on a limb alone because I actually do share his concerns as well. So I wanted to go on the record for that.
So you're okay with moving?
Absolutely.
Do we want to approve the five and bring more information on the six and bring that back in June? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm fine either way.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Adams? Mr. Adams, are you okay with just the five and we? Okay.
Yes, yes.
So.
So we would need a modified motion and we need to go back.
Yes, yes. So Mr. Adams, would you like to make the motion?
Sorry. Yes, Madam President, I'd like to amend the motion that's currently on the floor and remove the, one of the vendors, that would be the vendor Champions Before and After School based in Portland, Oregon. That, that's my amended motion. I'm not sure if that's a proper roster rule motion.
I accept that amendment.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It has been moved by Winford Adams, second by Justine Durant, that we amend the previous motion of eliminating one vendor that's Champions out of Portland from the list of vendors for before and after-school childcare and enrichment services. So we will continue with our vote. At this time, I will now poll the board members for their vote to approve and adopt all of, all of the other vendors for this, for this motion. Mr. Adams, Winford Adams?
Aye.
We are now voting, okay. Kelly Hodges?
I'm saying.
That is correct. Thank you. Deborah Jensen?
Can you hear me? I'm saying.
Yes. Aye. Yes. Justine Durant?
Aye.
I said aye.
Janet Gonzalez? Ms. Gonzalez?
She's muted.
But she's frozen.
May also be frozen.
Okay. Donald Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, vote aye. I will come back to Ms. Gonzalez at this time.
Her audio feed has cut out. Oh, it just reconnected, so she might be able to join us now.
Okay.
Ms. Gonzalez, are you with us?
Yes, I came off sound for a few minutes.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez, we'd like your vote. Okay, thank you. The motion carries, the motion carries six, four, and one abstention. So the motion passes. And Ms. Westbrook's, we will put that vendor on our agenda for the June meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, the Board of Trustees will recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, section 551. closed meeting in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized, Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, and Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076, to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 7:52 PM. As presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I will now poll the vote, poll the board members for their vote on this item. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez?
Aye.
Donald Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approves the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of their terms the probationary contracts of Louis Alexander, Cynthia Lyamu, Damonica Jenkins, and Leslie Williams, as presented in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Donald Davis, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate at the end of their term the probationary contracts of Louis Alexander, Cynthia Lyamu, Damonica Jenkins, and Leslie Williams, as presented in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent or designate to provide notice of the board's action to the impacted employees pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. So I will now poll the board members for their vote on this item. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez? Jana Gonzalez?
Aye.
Donald Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the settlement agreement and release of all claims in the EEOC matter styled Patricia Fruit versus Spring ISD, charge number 460-2020-01513, as discussed in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Winford Adams, that the board approve the settlement agreement and release of all claims in the EEOC matter styled Patricia Fruit versus Spring ISD, charge number 460-2020-01513, as discussed in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement. I will now poll the vote, poll the board members for their vote on this item. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez?
I think we lost Jana.
Okay, Donald Davis?
Aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, aye. Was Jana able to get back on?
No, she just texted me and says she lost connection.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries with six, four, and one absentee.
She's back on. She's back on, she's back on.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez, we will now accept your vote on the motion.
Her audio just connected, so you, you might need to repeat that. I'm not sure if she caught your whole statement.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez, we will now accept your vote on the board's approval of the settlement agreement and release of all.
President of Newhouse?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Do we have a motion on the easement?
No.
No, there's no motion on the easement.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Well, since there are no further motions, no additional discussions, I will entertain a moment, a motion for adjournment. And I think I heard that from Dr. Jensen, and a second by Winford Adams, that we adjourn our meeting for tonight. I will poll the vote, poll the board members. Winford Adams, Jr.
Aye.
Kelly P. Hodges?
Aye.
Deborah Jensen?
Aye.
Justine Durant?
Aye.
Jana Gonzalez? Donald Davis?
Definitely aye.
And myself, Rhonda Newhouse, and I will give Jana just a second to get back with us. Ms. Gonzalez?
She just dropped off again.
I think we may have lost her. But the motion carries six, four, and one absence. Thank you. This will conclude the regular session of the Board of Trustees meeting for tonight.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you all, you all have a safe